And welcome to the Tuesday, May the 3rd edition of the Lane County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting. Welcome everyone this morning. We first item on our agenda is adjustments to the agenda. I have one slide. Any adjustments to the agenda, Ms. Mokrheyski?
No adjustments, Chair.
Very good. When we get to consent calendar, we have a question to raise once the consent calendar comes forward. But on the adjustments to the agenda, I will be leaving this meeting briefly from 9:30 till 10 o'clock. We'll be participating in Lane County Community Mental Health Program certification interview. And at that point, Vice Chair Trigger will take the gallup for a period of time. So moving down the agenda, do we have any emergency business this morning?
Sure.
Yes?
You had briefly mentioned one adjustment to the agenda. And just for clarification, I was pulling item 5A2 for a brief disclaimer.
And I'll ask you this question right now, Commissioner, but do you want to pull that from the agenda for a separate vote, or just to make a comment on it during the, during to the, to the motion?
Mainly to provide a comment, which I, I mean, I can do separately for that vote, or do it under another section, but it's specific to that.
It is. But no need, you'll be voting in the affirmative on the consent count. I don't need to put words into your mouth. But so we probably will not pull it from the agenda. Just I'll call on you for a comment that part of the motion then, after, after the motion is made. Very good. Thank you for that clarification, Chair, Commissioner. Then moving down, we have that covered to emergency business. I see none. This morning, we have public comments. And as usual, I'm going to ask Ms. Jones to conduct the queue for the public comments. Soon, in three weeks, we'll be, we're anticipating having live public comments. We'll be in three weeks, we will be, we anticipate going live in Harris Hall. But for the time being, we're going to continue with the process that we've had. Speakers will be taken in the order that they sign up, limited to three minutes per comment. If the number exceeds 10, the Chair has the option of curtailing comments. We don't do that. So we'll just continue with comments until they're exhausted this morning, three minutes at a time. And at three minutes, I'm going to let you know that the mic will be silenced. There'll be no warning prior to that. So keep an eye on the clock when you're speaking, and watch for the mic to be silenced. If you'd wanted anything to be contained in today's public record, you would have wanted to submit that at least 24 hours ahead of time. So in written form, that is. So Ms. Jones, I'll turn to you for the queue. We have public comments.
Thank you, Chair Far. This time, if you have registered to participate in public comment for today's meeting, I would ask you to raise your virtual hand, and I will call upon you in the order in which those hands are raised. Right now, I see, I see hands slowly going up. I see Bill Close, followed by Tressa Beaver. Bill, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public comment.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, Bill Close, local, small-town land use attorney. Thanks for hearing me out. You folks have on your agenda for this afternoon, a nine-page memo from Land Management Division discussing county regulations and compliance with state law. I've been through that briefly. There's a lot to unpack there. There's just one issue I want to take a minute to comment on this morning, and that is the forest template dwelling issue. The memo says that Luba has corrected the way the county has been misapplying the law for decades. That's too simplistic. And it's a surrender to no housing on forest land lobby. There. This issue relates to Policy 15 and the Comprehensive Plan, which is ambiguous. This board took itself out of the land use decision process a few years ago. That left the business of interpreting plan language to the hearing official and to Luba with no deference to any county interpretation. Only the county board gets deference from Luba, and it gets extreme deference. So with respect to forest template dwellings, in big game, Land Watch got the brass ring on Carousel. This Luba contrated what the hearings officials said, that this policy applies directly to forest template dwellings, sets the acreage minimums. Nobody can meet those acreage minimums. So the county is essentially out of the forest template dwelling business. So if the county were still in the county board, we're still in the business of participating periodically in the decision process, then this county board could have gotten in on the second decision, the King decision, and straightened out Luba. The county board could have interpreted Policy 15 in a way, how forest template dwellings, and Luba would, as a matter of law, had to defer to interpretation. Any plausible interpretation by the county board must be deferred to by Luba. So how do we fix it now? We fix it by having the county board do an ad hoc interpretation, support the interpretation adopted by the county staff in the mid-eighties when this policy was adopted. And the county, the hearings officials can apply it going forward. If somebody doesn't like an interpretation, they can appeal it to Luba. But Luba will defer to it because they have to. That's the solution. This is a very big deal for a lot of people. Hundreds of ma's, pa's have lost their right to get their dwelling that they've been counting on for years. I said no to two people already this week, and it's only Tuesday. On the past couple months, I've said no, impossible, to dozens and dozens. So this is something you can fix if you want to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Close.
Thank you for your public comments. Our next presenter is Tressa Beaver, followed by Micah McComber. Tressa, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public comment. I do show you are self-muted.
Can you hear me? Hello? Great. Thank you so much for hearing our public comments today. I have not had a chance to go over the agenda that you guys are proposing for today. But I do want to comment on a number of things that are happening in Eugene, in Lane County, that, that I'm concerned about. Well, first of all, I want to speak to the closed-door policies around the vaccine mandates and vaccine passports. I don't care what, that, I don't care what you say in regards to saying that that's not going to happen. There is a lot of efforts being made in backdoor dealings around that. And, and I say absolutely not. It is not these vaccine passports, and masks, and all of that. This COVID-19 agenda has got to stop, period. And, and so I'm, I demand that, that you guys make sure that none of those policies come into play at all in Lane County and/or in Oregon, period. Another major concern of mine is, is the housing development. We, we don't need big skyscrapers or, or four complex dwellings, you know, single-family homes are, are what this town was built on. And, and I really like the small-town feel that Eugene has had throughout my life. And I'd like to have that continue, to be that way. And, and these new ordinances that are, that are being voted on for being able to build fourplexes and what have you, is just not right. So another thing is, we do, we don't need to be managing the forests the way that we are. Logging is really destructive, and our, our forests are not farms, and not farm forests. So my request is that we manage the forests and the, and our natural regions in, in a more sustainable and effective way. We need to have good transportation.
Thank you, Ms. Beaver.
Thank you for your pub, thank you for your public comments. Our next speaker is Micah McComber. I do show that Micah is our last speaker. If you did sign up for public comments and, and have not given public comments, but would like to, please raise your hand now, and I will call on you after Micah. Micah, I will unmute your microphone, and you may begin your public comment. I do show, there you go.
Thanks for having me on here. Good morning, Board Commissioners. The F2, I'm a local builder in Lane County for the last 22 years. I also live on F2 property in Lane County. And this, this matter is very important to me. I deal with the Lane County Planning Department, you know, on a weekly basis, for projects for my customers, and also for myself. I built my house in 2009. And now, when I find out, when I talk to the Lane County Planning Department, I find out that if my house burns to the ground, I will not be able to rebuild my house with the new NIMKISH ruling case being applied, because I'm not 80 acres. This, this really upsets me. I've tried my best to let as many people know about this as I can. I believe that Lane County is the only, only county in the state that is interpreting the rules this way. And I believe that Bill Close has the knowledge and the expertise to direct this thing, to get it corrected, and get it taken care of. Because our county is effectively limiting housing availability. There's over, I've heard, I've heard the number of 4,600 F2 properties in Lane County. Property owners, as myself and other, others in the county, have been negatively impacted by these interpretations of the code that the Lane County, Land Watch Lane County, and the Lane County Planning Departments forcing on us. I think something needs to be done to correct future permits for F2 template dwellings going forward, and for current homeowners. I appreciate you guys taking the time to weigh in on this, and I hope, I hope something can be done. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comments. At this time, Chair Far, I do not see any other hands raised for public comments, so I will return the meeting to you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And we'll move on to item four, which is Commissioners' Response to Public Comments and/or Other Issues or Remonstrances. And I will look to the queue for Commissioners' hands raised. I see none at this time. There we go. Commissioner Bozovich.
Sorry, I was slow in trying to get my hand raised there. Fine, playing fine cursor. So I just want to say real quick, thank you to Bill Close and Micah for their testimony about the, the template dwelling issues and the NIMKISH and King decisions. I believe that there is actually a different solution than just taking a board interpretation. There's a portion where the intent of our big game habitat preservation in our rural comprehensive plan was supposed to be done densities at a regional level. And we never, as a board or county, adopted those regions. And I believe if, if we maybe talk with some big game biologists, and try and get an idea of what a region size should be, I'm sure it's going to be far greater than a single parcel, as the density rule is now being applied under NIMKISH. Although I kind of wish that NIMKISH had come to the board to make a decision to defend our, our interpretation there. We, we left the applicant to defend themselves. So that's one place I believe we can actually clarify, and that we've gone beyond state law, because there is no intent to apply density at the single parcel level. In addition, I'm aware that Dave Collier, a surveyor from the Cottage Grove area, had wanted to give testimony this morning, but he, he contacted me to say he was, he couldn't get into the meeting, technological issues, to talk about an interpretation by LMD to apply 25% maximum area allowed in a lot line adjustment. I haven't been able to find it in Chapter 13 of our code. It's a fairly recent reinterpretation by LMD that is not reflected in any state statute. So I, I, I hope to have a very robust conversation this afternoon about where we do go beyond state statute. And, and I, I believe we have in a couple places, one implying big game densities at, at a single parcel level. And I think we also have gone beyond that in lot line adjustments. So I'm really looking forward to this afternoon's conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozovich. Commissioner Burning.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you to those who provided testimony. I'm also looking forward to the afternoon's discussion. Forgive me, Commissioner, but if I was going to have to listen to Mr. Close or Mr. You, I may go with the land use attorney. I appreciate Mr. Close, your suggestion of a solution. I'm always looking for solutions. I believe it was just last week, wasn't it, that the board discussed, and there was really no Commissioner that liked the notion that someone, if they had property on F2 zone land, and their house burned down or something occurred, couldn't just replace it. I think there was a unanimous sense that that was just unfair. So I look forward to the discussion. I thank the people that provided testimony. I think a lot of what he says is common sense. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Looking for further hands raised? This was under remonstrances and/or response. I see none. So I'm going to foregate, forego any, any testimony that I would give, and move along down the agenda without objection. We'll move directly along then to the next item on the agenda is, we will, at the sound of my gavel, we will recess the Board of County Commissioners' meeting, and we will reconvene in a joint meeting of the Board of Health and the Board of Commissioners, where we have a fairly meaty agenda. I will remind the Commissioners that at some point in the next few minutes, I will be leaving this meeting. And at that point, Vice Chair Trigger will be conducting the gavel services. So at the sound of my gavel, we are reconvened as the Board of Health and Board of County Commissioners. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Mokrheyski or Ms. Gray?
We do not.
Very good. Then we'll move along with item 2A. On the, and once again, we're the Board of Health and the Board of Commissioners meeting in joint session. We have a discussion on COVID-19 response and recovery. And today, we have Dr. Jocelyn Warren with us, and Eve Gray, who, Dr. Warren is our health manager, public health manager, and Eve Gray is the director. Mr. Mokrheyski, if I may, I'll turn this over to you to introduce the panel and to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. And I think you adequately introduced the panel. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Warren and our Director of Health and Human Services, Eve Gray, for the update and presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Far, for having me today. I'm here to present an update on our COVID response. I have requested control of the screen from Diana to be able to do my PowerPoint slides here.
Oh, Diana does not look easily.
Everyone has control. You should be able to.
Okay, I am, oh, that's, there we go. Okay. Thank you. Here we are. Thank you. Is everyone able to see my PowerPoint slides? Is that correct? Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much, Chair Far and Vice Chair Trigger. I am providing an update that I think is about a month since the last time we had an update, when Brian Johnson was here with you in early April. Sorry, just one second. So to begin with, our case status, as you know, cases are beginning to rise. We are now at approximately, the current cases, our seven, our seven-day rate is 135.3 per 100,000. That's a, that's a big jump from where we were in early April, when it was at 38.5 cases per 100,000. And I think the important thing to know is, one of the important things is, we are still considered to be in low spread by the CDC. So once we, if we do exceed 200 cases per 100,000 population, then that would be revised. The other thing, though, that's really important to consider is hospitalization and death associated with COVID-19. Yesterday, there were 19 COVID patients in our two hospitals in Lane County, with two in the ICU. That's a very low number, considering the increases that we have seen in cases, and is really not comparable to other surges that we have seen previously. The number of deaths is also down. There were no deaths reported since Friday, and we have a total now of 530. I'm going to move now to vaccination rates. Our vaccinations continue to increase. However, the, the rate of vaccination, of course, has slowed down considerably. There was a bit of a bump when the boosters were first approved in late March and early April. However, since then, it's really leveled off. And we're seeing a much, a much less interest in, in vaccination than we have seen previously. There were approximately 1,000 vaccinations given in the last month in Lane County. Part of that is vaccine is widely available, and that's great. I think we're also thinking that perhaps people who want to be vaccinated have been vaccinated. Although, we do continue to do a lot of outreach in our rural communities, particularly, and among underserved groups, in collaboration with our community-based organizations. In addition, the Oregon Health Authority continues to operate the Otzen Clinic. That will continue to operate through May. They are planning their last clinic to be May 26. Here in public health, we are regrouping to determine what our own vaccination efforts look like after the Oregon Health Authority moves out of Otzen, and where we can best target our efforts to be able to meet the needs in our community. I do want to mention the electronic vaccine card. I know there is a lot of discussion about this. This is an option for people who are interested. It's certainly not required, and Oregon has no plans to make it mandatory. It is the same information that's available on your paper card, and is meant to make, I believe it's meant to make things easier. It's a, it's a convenience. It is the electronic vaccine card, and this is important to know, that's not shared with any other government agencies, and does not include any private information other than vaccine status. That is, again, the same information that is on the paper card. And individuals decide who to share that information with. The vaccine card, the electronic vaccine card is free, and it's available in 13 languages. I myself actually did this yesterday to see how easy it was. And I have heard that some people are having challenges with downloading or getting it on their phone. I had no difficulty in doing it myself. There are other directions on the website that Oregon Health Authority has put together, in case people are having some challenges in, in accessing that.
Dr. Warren, pardon my interruption. I'm going to be stepping out for a second. But when you say on the website, is that on the Lane County website for people watching?
That is not. It's on the Oregon Health Authority website, but we could certainly link to that on our website.
Very good.
Chair Far, thank you for that recommendation. I will make sure that happens.
I will look for that. And Vice Chair Trigger, at this point, I will relinquish the gavel to you. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Chair Trigger and Committee, the, the testing that we're doing in public health has, has continued. We do frequent testing in outlying communities, particularly, because that seems to be where the testing is most difficult to access. So we do twice monthly testing in Oak Ridge, Cottage Grove, Crestwell, Pleasant Hill, and Florence. And then in Springfield, we have two locations at which we do twice monthly testing. And then in North Eugene, we have weekly testing. Our plans are to continue that. We're also evaluating according to need. We have seen less demand also at our testing events. It could be that as the cases continue to rise, we will see more demand. So we are really playing it by ear, and really just trying to determine what the community need is, and also how to retain adequate capacity in case the need changes dramatically or suddenly. Upcoming, upcoming things I'd like to share with the, with the Commissioners is that, as I said, we continue to assess our staffing needs and make adjustments. Our, our funding at the state and federal level, of course, is limited. So we continue to figure out how to best use that funding for staff who are cross-trained in both vaccination and testing, and also responding to the community through our COVID hotline. But how best to use those staff, and where exactly to focus those efforts? We are, of course, planning also for the approval of vaccine for children aged six months through four years. That is expected by June. It could actually happen at any time. We are not sure of the timing. But we have been planning potentially to do some smaller clinics with childcare partners or others, and the real focus on people who experience barriers to vaccination in the community. And then also coming up, we are contracting for FEMA billing to ensure that we can bill for our eligible activities over the course of the pandemic, and maintain resources to be able to, to stretch those out over the next few years, depending on the course of COVID, which is really difficult to predict. The other really kind of exciting outcome of, of the, of the pandemic is that we are developing our own medical reserve corps. We're the only large county that does not have a medical reserve corps. So we put a lot of effort into thinking how to do that. We have had an amazing cadre of volunteers supporting this effort, over 500 people. And in fact, they were recognized just last month by the Oregon Serve Oregon organization that actually coordinates a lot of the volunteer activities. We've had some, some volunteers who have put in an extraordinary number of hours, and are interested in continuing with us, which is the great news. We are going to develop what we're calling a public health reserve corps, so that we can expand beyond just the medical team into other sort of lay positions that can help as well with outreach and education, and don't necessarily need to have a medical license to contribute to that public health effort. And that is the end of my presentation. I will pause sharing.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Warren. Are there any questions for Dr. Warren? Or I see Eve Gray has joined us as well from the board. I'll just, I have a question. When you say there's been 1,000 vaccinations in the last month, that's, I assume includes, that's basically shots. So that's inclusive of folks over 50 or with other eligibilities getting their second booster or potentially fourth shot. Is that right?
Thank you, Vice Chair Trigger. Yes. And in fact, the number of boosters easily exceeds the number of first shots in our community.
Great. And, and I would also say, just when people say everyone who's gotten a shot, who's eligible has gotten one, you know, there are people coming into age eligibility, including for first doses or, or boosters. So I don't think we can assume everyone who's wanted a vaccination has been able to get one for all kinds of reasons. My other question is, or reminder for the general public, if you can share, lots of home testing going on. How or if are we capturing any positive home test results to include them in our case counts? Or can we presume that that's somewhat of an under-reported case count?
Thank you, Vice Chair Trigger. Yeah, we can absolutely assume that our lab-reported tests are not capturing the full extent of disease in the community. It is possible for people to report their positive home tests to us, and we do try to collect that information. It, we don't believe it represents more than a fraction of the actual tests in the community. But when people make that call, we are able to provide additional information and connect them with other resources that they may need. So we, we really do appreciate that sort of. So we, we really do appreciate that sort of citizen science as well, when people are able to provide that information to us.
Great. And thanks for that reminder, just for the public watching. It's important. The, the positive test results are not just for case counts and transmissibility and public health reporting, but that we have resources we can connect people to if they need, you know, groceries or they're at risk of, you know, running out of paid time off if they had any to begin with and so on. So there's rent assistance and so on. So it's important that the public knows that folks who need to miss work or are facing other struggles because of a positive test result should get in touch with public health for support. Thank you for that. I'm really excited to hear more about the Medical Reserve Corps, that program develops in the public health in particular. So looking forward to hearing more about that. Commissioner Buck?
Thank you. I am also excited about the Medical Reserve Corps. I, I just, I'm thrilled to see that come about because you've got, you've got all the folks that volunteered, like you said, and they're ready, you know? And, and this is a great way to put that to use after the fact. I have a specific question, which was right now, you can get a booster if you're fifty or older. Are you seeing anything on the horizon for boosters for folks under the age of fifty or a timeline that's come out in any way?
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. The, the second booster is certainly available to people who have immunocompromised conditions. And the, there is always discussion about what additional boosters are going to be, need, need to be made available. I, I believe that that is the recommendation and I will, I'm happy to look into that further. But my understanding is that it is available to adults. So if I have misunderstood that, I will absolutely make that correction. But let me, let me look into that and I will certainly respond when I have more information. Commissioner Bernie?
Yes, Chair. I'm just kidding. Thank you, Chair. Dr. Warren, you mentioned, and a couple of commissioners have indicated they're enthused about a medical reserve corps. I'd like several things. One, I'd like to, you said that we're the only large county that does not have one. So one, I'd like to know how many large counties are in that pool you're discussing? Two, why are we the only large county that does not have one at this point? And three, what exactly is a medical reserve?
So I will, thank you, Commissioner Bernie and Vice Chair Trigger. I will try to provide as much background as I can. I know some of these decisions about whether or not to have a reserve corps were made some time ago. So it obviously came to our attention at the beginning of the pandemic and the need was obviously made quite clear to us. The, the difference between having our own medical reserve corps and having to go through the state is having to go through the organization SERVE OR, which is intended to be a sort of a centralized kind of organization and the ability to, to deploy at the state level, the volunteers that it registers. The issue with that, of course, is that for, even for our volunteers that were in Lane County, we had first to secure that through the SERVE OR mechanism. So we couldn't, we couldn't reach out to the volunteers directly. We had to go through that organization. And part of this is due to liability concerns and other issues that really need to be well-considered before implementing or using volunteers in a medical setting, even in, in an emergency. So the other large counties that have, that have their own medical reserve corps include Multnomah and Clackamas, Washington and Marion. At a minimum, there may be additional counties as well. I am less clear as to why we don't have our own. I know there was interest in it years ago. I think there may have at that time been legal barriers here locally that made it prohibitive. I am not certain about that, but we have been working very closely with our legal counsel over the past several months to answer, you know, questions about liability and how we set it up to protect both the volunteers and the county as we respond to emergencies. And that's, that's, that's the extent of what I know in terms of the history of, of SERVE OR and here at the Medical Reserve Corps. There are a few instances where medical reserve corps are considered a little more broadly as we are trying to do with the Public Health Reserve Corps. So we are in communication with counties actually across the country and other places where they are using volunteers under this sort of expanded umbrella to be able to bring a broader scope of activities with the Medical Reserve Corps. And obviously, the Medical Reserve Corps will also benefit us enormously in the events of other natural disasters. So we are also partnering with the Sheriff's Office and the folks that organize the search and rescue teams in order to ensure that we are aligned and able to respond together in the, in the event of an emergency.
Thank you. That was one set of questions, Chair. The other set, although I would say that in terms of interfacing or intersections with other agencies that would be interested in that, you might also want to touch base with the Climate Initiative because so many of the event, these events obviously are related to that. My other set of questions really just very quickly is, obviously the vaccine, vaccine, you know, new people getting vaccines is leveling off, right? And that's pretty clear. I would imagine, I don't have data, that it's leveling off pretty much everywhere. Those that want them, they've been so accessible, like now probably have them. And other than, as Commissioner Trigger mentioned, new people being eligible, I assume that's the case. So if that's the case, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that that seventy-two point something percent of Lane County residents vaccinated is lower than the state average and lower than the national average. But I don't know that for a fact. Is that correct?
I can't speak to national average. I can't say that it is somewhat lower than the state average. Yes, a few points.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Any other comments for Dr. Warren before we move on?
And Vice Chair Trigger, if I might, just to clarify, so the, the boosters are available to everyone for whom they are eligible in terms of timing from the first vaccine. The second boosters are, are available to those who are fifty, age fifty and above. And anyone who is immunocompromised as well. And that is quite a long list as well. So we will continue to, to watch that, of course, and to plan for the littles when that does come. Thank you.
Thank you for the update and as always for the work from public health on this important issue. Appreciate it so much. I see Roger Brubaker has joined us. I don't know if Eve Gray is still with us and wants to introduce this next item on the Public Health Board Agenda. This is Item 2B, which is a discussion responding to suicide deaths amongst youth and adolescents in Lane County. So Eve Gray, I'll turn it over to you and then we'll hear from you and your staff. And I see our county administrators here as well. So staff, take it away.
Great. Thank you. So I will introduce Roger Brubaker, who runs our Suicide Response Efforts and has been very active in responding to our latest public health emergency in Lane County related to youth suicide. Dr. Jocelyn Warren is of course still here, following up and can answer any questions. And I am available as needed as well. So Roger, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, hi. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me and taking the time to requesting this information, actually. It's greatly appreciated.
Welcome. I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but we're, we're still seeing the last slide from Dr. Warren's COVID update presentation. So I just wanted to make sure we've got the right information up on the screen as you, I don't know if you're doing a presentation that needs a screen share, but we're not there yet, if you are.
Yeah, no problem. It looks like I can, oh, there we go. I just have to take control. Okay. There we go. Here, actually, let's take a moment while I get this all set up now. Thank you for your patience.
Great. We see your slides now.
There we go. Okay, good. I think everyone's seeing our slots now.
We are. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, thank you again for requesting this information today. I think this is vital to make suicide prevention visible to the public. And so I really appreciate any opportunity that we have to do that, particularly right now. Much of my job in suicide prevention is to try to address a inherently traumatic topic in a reserved and approachable way. And so oftentimes, that communication necessitates a sense of calm and encouraging a sense of calm as we approach this topic. At this time, I really do think it's quite important actually that we adjust that setting a little bit and think about this with a greater sense of urgency. So just with that kind of theme in mind. What I'm going to be addressing today is, as the title here states, postvention is prevention. Postvention is a term that we use in my field to describe the activities and strategies that are used after a death by suicide to support the needs of people who are grieving after a death by suicide and the impact that it has on a community. But then also to address the potential for suicide contagion, further suicides. This is particularly relevant in youth and adolescents as suicide contagion is really a phenomenon that occurs most likely in those populations that I'll be discussing today. So I'm just going to be talking about some trends here generally to provide some context on the front end and then more recent events as well and how they, they are relevant. Just to, just for some background information on suicide mortality in the age group we'll be discussing. On average, roughly about nine to fourteen youth and adolescents, these are people who are twenty-four years of age and younger, die by suicide each year in our county. The demographics around these populations are pretty, are pretty important to note as they differ in certain ways from demographics in other populations. So first off here, sex, sexuality and gender oftentimes are themes that people are concerned about and rightfully so. I would want to indicate that the, that in national and local trends, what we see primarily are cisgendered heterosexual males dying by suicide most frequently in this population. And we see a greater rate of ideation and attempts in our LGBTQIA+ populations. But I cannot stress enough that the mortality, the vast majority of deaths that we see are in cisgendered heterosexual males. And it isn't, it's important to note that because the role that sexuality and gender play in suicide affects everybody. Not just the marginalized, but the populations that we often point to as the oppressive populations as well. Also want to point out that in terms of race and ethnicity, the greatest rate of suicide that we see in this population is among American Indian, Native Alaskan populations. We, we see this more on a national level. It's harder to see and comment on this at a local level, just because of the demographic distribution of race and ethnicity in Lane County. But this is the trend that we see on a national level. Also to emphasize again, that white populations have the highest rate of suicide following American Indian, Native Alaskan youth. There also has been a recent national increase in youth suicide among black populations as well. That is, should be just noted as well, that we're seeing a significant change in a population that traditionally has seen far lower suicide rates than any other racial and ethnic population. Some of the common risk factors that we note in this group are similar to other populations that die by suicide. However, there are some important differences. Number one that I always note for folks is relationship distress. One of the most common precipitating factors that we see before a death by suicide, particularly among young boys and men, is a, is relationship distress, namely romantic, namely romantic relationships. And again, I really emphasize that this relates to the gender norms, masculine norms particularly, and the coping strategies that we, that we encourage in our male and masculine populations in the US, nationally, statewide, locally. Other things that to note would be substance use is oftentimes a common risk factor among these groups, among these decedents for suicide. Isolation being a lack of various types of relationships or a limitation. Mental health problems often are associated with suicide as well, but roughly only around fifty percent of people who die by suicide have some sort of diagnosis of a, a mental health issue of, of some type, namely usually depression and anxiety disorders. The other thing to really emphasize here is lethal means and their influence on suicide rates. Our environments, as we know, in public health, right, influence our health and suicide is no different. The vast majority of people who die in this category die through the use of a firearm. And this is really about access and home safety. And we, but we also see a greater distribution of both hanging and poisonings than we do in other populations. And that's really because of a, the limitations actually around firearm access that people use the other means that are available to them. Just to, just to emphasize one thing here too, just because we do, it is important to focus on youth suicide. It's also important to name that this, that deaths in this population represent roughly ten percent of all suicide deaths in Lane County. We have on average around one hundred people die by suicide in our community each year. And the visibility of youth suicide draws a great deal of attention, but there isn't a very important undercurrent of suicide that is not nearly as visible. Last but not least here, just to mention, all suicide counts are assumed to be biased due to the ambiguity of intention. What I mean by this is that it's very hard to distinguish oftentimes between overdose deaths and deaths by suicide. In our county, we do not have a way to distinguish and to get information that would allow us to distinguish between suicide deaths and overdose deaths in a rapid and robust way. However, other counties in Oregon do have methods that they have employed and best practices. And I would encourage our county to adopt them in the future. Here's just a graph just showing really quickly what this, what these deaths by counts look like. I mentioned earlier, just on average, nine to fourteen deaths per year in this age group. However, you can see a great deal of variability. As we have all learned, I think through COVID, public health reporting practices do not allow me to share the most recent information because of identi, because of identi, identifiability concerns for 2022. Something else just also important to note, just by the data, is that roughly around, in sixth, starting in sixth grade, roughly around one out of every, forgive me, one out of every ten students in sixth grade seriously consider taking their own life in any given year. And by the time those students reach eleventh grade, it's one out of every five, demonstrating that beyond the mortality patterns that we see, we also just see a burden of suffering and distress in our youth. And this is, I think there's a lot of ways to describe that current, particularly after COVID. And I think suicide is one perspective that allows us to see that. These trends have actually been relatively static for years and they are starting to increase though. The other piece that I would want to mention here also is that among youth, we see a much greater rate of suicidal ideation. That means serious thoughts of suicide, but also suicide attempts. And when we look at six, our sixth graders in Lane County, this is from our student health survey distributed by the Oregon Health Authority, we see roughly one out of every twenty-five sixth graders have seriously have, have attempted suicide already and reaching up to nearly one out of every fifteen by the time they get into seventh, into eleventh grade. So again, I hope this helps describe kind of the prevalence and burden of suicide in this population. To, to kind of focus on current events, why there is a public health concern right now. Over the past five months, eleven youth adolescents from Lane County have died by suicide. These events meet the two CDC criteria for a suicide point cluster. Those criteria are an unexpected number of deaths in our region in this timeframe and community recognition of increased deaths and attempts. That CDC criteria has a important wisdom about it, meaning that regardless That CDC criteria has a important wisdom about it, meaning that regardless of if a trend is, is seen by people saying in my position. That if the community perceives it to exist, it is important that we respond abundantly and visibly nonetheless. Just because when this conversation starts in a community, it is the job of public health to influence it in a positive and healthy way. And that's the, the purpose of our program in many ways. There is no evidence to suggest that these deaths are linked, meaning that suicide contagion. Meaning that there are no, there is no evidence to suggest that there are interpersonal relationships between any of the decedents. Or that there is any common cause. And there's also no reason, there's no evidence to suggest that there is a novel cause related to these deaths. As you noticed from the, one of the previous graphs, the variability of suicide is quite various. And so what we are seeing is the, is the nature of small numbers behaving quite ver, with a lot of variation in them. That's, that's a cold way of kind of just numer, quantifying this, this. But the more compassionate way is also just to really emphasize that this impact regardless of that description is enormous in our community right now. We have only seen in the history of Lane County, we have only seen one other event like this roughly about four years ago. When we had roughly, sorry remembering here, seven youth in this age group die in a period of six weeks by suicide as well. Some other important things to emphasize here is that suicides do tend to increase in the spring. Most people assume that suicide is a winter problem. We actually, we see this all throughout the, throughout the world, that springtime is always the greatest seasonal period of risk. And also very, something very important is to note is that suicides tend to increase in the recovery phase of natural disasters. So when I described earlier that I'm going to buck my normal trend and really try to communicate a sense of urgency around this issue. It's because of the confluence of a variety of different trends at this point in time right now in this age group. So what are we doing about current events? We have created a response team using the instant command structure to coordinate this response. The objectives of this team are to create safety and mental wellbeing of affected people. And the responders and the educators who are impacted as well. I always want to emphasize that trauma informed care should be applied at all points in a response. Meaning that not just those who are impacted, but those who are responding are considered. Our other objectives are to control the spread of suicide and conduct epidemiology and surveillance work of the decedents. And the bereaved. We want to make sure that we identify who those populations are accurately so we can reach them. And we want to make sure that we also provide appropriate information to all community stakeholders impacted by these suicides. We are also collaborating with the Oregon Health Authority's Suicide Rapid Response Program. This was set up after the implementation of Senate Bill five sixty-one requiring the creation of a position or a position like mine at, to act as the postvention response lead after deaths by suicide in this population. So this is what we are seeing here is really a expansion of our normal practice of responding to deaths by suicide. However, we're doing it in a much more visible and population based way than we would responding to separate individual deaths. What this response looks like in schools and in the greater community. We have onsite and tele behavioral health support for youth and staff at directly impacted schools. We have been hosting a series and plan to host more of community conversations on suicide prevention, grief, self harm, substance use and resilience. The most important part of a postvention response is that it is visible and transparent. You'll notice I keep using these words is because oftentimes people want to tuck in after a death by suicide and talk about it quietly. And the most important thing that we can do is talk about it publicly to make sure that people who are suffering, who are in distress. Know that someone's on the job and that there are people that care. And that matters for people that are in distress, but also again, for those responders, for those educators. Particularly in schools right now, so that they appreciate that there are supports in place and there's a plan. We have also had critical incident stress management sessions for school staff. This is the same process that's used for first responders, law enforcement after critical incidents to help them move through to the point where they can grieve because oftentimes people get a very common experience for people after traumatic experiences is to get a little stuck. And so we want to make sure that we help them move through that pathway towards healing. We have implemented and will continue to implement universal screening and safety planning for students in select schools who have been impacted by these deaths. We have also been distributing a variety of lethal means restriction devices. This includes lockbox, medication lockboxes, gun safes, and communicating about home safety and monitoring of youth who are at high risk of suicide. We've also been again, sharing a variety of different resources and information to various community members. And doing a, a lot of media engagement. The media, the local media here has been an outstanding partner in this response effort. Just a quick, so like I said, recent events have shifted many of our priorities recently and necessarily so. But I do just want to emphasize quickly that we do have a a long tradition of suicide prevention in Lane County for decades now. Including a variety of different work that we do out of the program here in prevention with the cooperation of Lane County Behavioral Health and Health and Human Services generally. In which we conduct suicide surveillance and data analysis to make sure that we understand the burden of suicide and how it's impacting our community. That we provide a variety of different types of training and technical consultation to professionals and laypeople. We have, we do a quite a bit of community engagement and public awareness through the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Lane County. And I hope that the commissioners have the opportunity to also check out the recent Why We Build project in which we profiled the lives of suicide attempt survivors in our community as well. We also help implement, we provide support to schools and other youth sort, youth serving organizations to implement suicide prevention intervention and postvention activities. In schools, this is related to Senate Bill five, Senate Bill fifty-two known as Addy's Act. And then also, we also, like I mentioned, provide postvention response every time a youth or adolescent dies by suicide. And this is carried out through a relationship that our office has with the medical examiner's office. Just because when I'm talking about suicide in a public place, I always just want to emphasize a couple of things. Just to emphasize, just for general community members to, that there are opportunities to learn about the signs of suicide and local resources. We offer a variety of different trainings and if people go to preventionlane.org, they can get connected to many of them. And we always just encourage people to look for the signs of suicide in friends, loved ones and anybody that they work with. To ask direct questions about suicide because it's safe. It won't plant the idea, it won't influence somebody, it'll actually probably just provide them with a sense of relief. We always want to encourage people to spend some time listening to people's stories and not, and not trying to find answers for them. And then share information on options and then help connect them to those options and those resources. And then always making sure that people are following up to demonstrate that not only did they care in that moment of crisis, but they continue to care. And also just generally because a lot of suicide work gets focused on crisis intervention. I also always want to encourage people to step back and expand their vision of suicide prevention to include whatever they do in their life that supports mental wellbeing, community connection and inclusion is suicide prevention. And not just focusing on moments of crisis. Recently, we've had, like I said, through the, through the Oregon Health Authority Suicide Rapid Response Program, we've had an enormous amount of support through OHA and then also other local community partners, I just wanted to note them very quickly. The Child Center with the cooperation of Jasper Mountain and Looking Glass continues to provide crisis response services to families and youth in our community and has been invaluable during this process. The Dougie Center up in Portland has provided a great deal of technical consultation on grief, particularly traumatic grief among youth and how families can support those youth. The Oregon Family Support Network, that's that logo down there that says Reach Out Oregon has provided a great deal of support for our events and the families in our county that have been impacted. Lines for Life, however, has also acted as a invaluable resource for our community during this time. As well as the members of the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Lane County, which public health staffs and supports. But it's ultimately an independent organization of professionals and people with lived experience of suicide in our community. Working together to create community based solutions to suicide prevention. That's my information right there. I will, for anybody's needs, I will stop sharing my screen and take any questions if folks have them.
Thank you so much. I see Chair Farr is back in the room, so if you'd like to regain chair, chairship, or if you want me to finish this agenda item, you just let me know, Chair.
Vice Chair, finish this agenda item and then let's keep continuity.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you so much for that presentation. Before I call on commissioners for any questions or response. I just want to say how much I appreciate in particular you noting that one of the most important things we can do is talk about the issue and make it public. And sort of normalize conversations, but I also just want to note that we need to do that with real care. So that anyone watching is, is being considered in the nature of our, our conversation and any questions that we might ask. So with that, I will open it up to the board for any feedback, comments, questions. Chair Farr.
Thank you, Vice Chair. You know, you know, the, the work that you have done over the last couple of years has been pretty astounding. And I just wanted to point out that KLCC did a really nice feature on, on the Why We Build project back in, I think it was maybe February this year. And that really was eye opening to me and to a lot of people in the community. I think the more we publicize it, and you said that the best thing we can do is talk about it. And the more we publicize it, the more we talk about it, you know, that really gets people, it, I, I hate to use the word normalize, but it makes it not a taboo subject to talk about, something that we do talk about upfront. And really point out the statistics that we are seeing in Lane County, the alarming statistics from Lane County. What was the number you said about sixth graders?
Yeah, if we're looking, if we're looking at serious thoughts of suicide or suicidal ideation, in sixth graders, we're seeing roughly about one out of every ten have seriously considered suicide at some point in, in the past year. And that, and in terms of those same sixth graders who have actually attempted suicide, we're seeing roughly about one out of every twenty-five.
Well, Mr. Brubaker, thank you. I've seen you in action in front of audiences, in front of engaging with people at the school district level in lots of different places and you really are making a difference. So really in any way that we as the board can help and I as a person can help, please do not hesitate to, to contact us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I looked away for a minute, so I see two hands, but not the order. I, let's see, in the queue, it looks like Commissioner Buck's hand was up first.
Thank you, and I certainly echo Chair Farr's comments. You know, we're focusing here today a lot on the youth suicide prevention. And here, you know, as a parent of a small child, you, you wonder how do you bring this topic up? Because it sounds like it's really important to do so prior to you know, kids hearing it from others or learning about it on their own. So how do you go about that with parents? And, you know, I'm sure it's age appropriated at any given grade level, but what do you suggest for parents on, on how to broach the subject with their child?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good, I think that's a, it's a very good question and a very delicate one. I think when we're thinking about young children. The it, it necessitates that we think about the ability to conceive of death. And to understand one's actions in very, in very young children, just because there might be quite a bit of uncertainty, ambiguity there. So what I always encourage parents and families to do is to start small. Make sure that we are, because usually suicide, particularly in youth and young adults is without pathologizing this in terms of a mental health problem, is a product of trauma, is a product of distress. And a person's, and a young adult's or young child's coping strategies. So the, the recommendations that I always provide are start small, start with conversations about emotions. Start with conversations about how bodies feel when people are in distress. Sometimes emotional vocabulary might be very difficult or unknown, actually, depending on the age of a child. So sometimes those emotions and those feelings will come through their body. So talking about like, you know, asking questions about if particularly any kind of like stomach problems or stomach pain or feeling of just unease or are good places to start, but if you can ask questions directly about emotions. Just encouraging that there is conversations about emotions and what they mean and where they come from and why they happen. These are conversations that really as adults, we should all have as well, right? Is to help us understand why we feel the way we feel. What happens and how we can influence our emotions. And then I think it is also very important to ask, if, if a family member, a parent or caregiver is getting a sense that a child may be thinking about taking their own life. Or just having a desire or a wish for a death or escape of some kind. To make sure that we're also having conversations about that. It's okay to suggest conversations about death. It's okay to open them up as parents as well. It's hard and terrifying, but it's also safe. And so when we have, so those conversations can, they get, they can get very nuanced and very difficult to, for me to describe oftentimes because it's so dependent on that parent child relationship and the level of comfort that each have with one another about difficult conversations. But starting with emotions and then asking questions that say, hey, have you ever, have you ever thought about death? Have you ever thought that you want to just escape all of this stress that you're under? Have you ever thought about that you wish you weren't alive or that you wish that you went to sleep and never woke up? These are all kind of entry ways into conversations about suicide that could be really valuable. And I would also, and to expand on that, I guess I would just encourage folks to sign up for one of our trainings. And our trainings are for the, for general audiences in suicide intervention skills through the Suicide Prevention Coalition of Lane County. But we also make sure that we are always on the line for quite some time for people to answer their particular questions about their children and about the circumstances that they're in. So that's a really great space to get more information.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Buck, any follow up? Okay, Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you, Chair. I want to preface my remarks by saying nineteen years ago, my first wife, my son's mother passed away from non-Hodgins lymphoma and I had personally experienced many of the symptoms you said with my boy nineteen years ago from the stomach issues. Notes of wanting to end his life. So this is, it's hard for me to hold back emotion really as I hear this. It is inconceivable for me to think that one out of ten sixth graders thinks, is that desperate? Is that hopeless? Is that ready to contemplate giving up? Much less, one out of five eleventh graders? That to me says that this thing is of epidemic proportions. So a couple of questions. One, if this is in epidemic proportions, why sir, did you say there are best practices out there and maybe in the future, Lane County can adopt them? Why aren't you advocating strongly and adamantly that we adopt them yesterday?
Yeah, that's a good question. So that, that very particular, we have a robust suicide prevention program. So my, that, that small critique I have is of one element. And what that is, is that we don't have in our county an ability to, what we know from the data is that roughly around that suicide rates are assumed to be roughly about a 30% undercount. And that is particularly because of the influence of the introduction of bias and uncertainty because of overdose deaths. That is, that has always been the case because it's very hard to understand intention. And that has only become more of a concern with the introduction of fentanyl in, in a variety of different substances in our community. So currently, we, the Senate Bill 561 requires every county to create a position, the Postvention Response Lead, and that is my designation currently in this position, to create a communication pathway between the Medical Examiner's Office and this position to communicate every time a youth or adolescent dies by suicide. However, because of that uncertainty, there are certainly deaths by suicide that we are missing that are overdoses. And there are overdoses that are occurring that we are not rapidly informed about. What, and those deaths by overdose also impacts communities. Some other counties in the, regardless of legislation, some other counties in the state and many other areas in the nation have adopted communication pathways that rapidly inform public health and behavioral healthcare professionals in an area about overdose deaths or ambiguous deaths as well, so that they can be included in response efforts. Our, our county currently does not have a process to do that.
Next question, I have a couple, sorry. Next question is, you mentioned that a part of the answer is engaging people and community connection is suicide prevention. Why aren't we providing training to any students that want it at any school in the county? So that we start creating the cadre of people who are the, really, truly on the ground with the young people you're discussing and who often know things that adults in their life or teachers simply don't.
Yeah, so I would, I would, that, that is, that is a significant issue. Youth, a lot of suicide prevention efforts, many of mine included, admittedly, are focused on, when, when, when they come to youth, are focused on preparing adults to prevent, to intervene during moments of crisis. However, what we, what we know from the data is that the youth, the most likely person for a youth to tell about their suicidal loss is another, is another, is another youth. And so youth play a critical role in suicide intervention, whether we would like that or not. There are very few evidence-based curricula that are appropriate for, for youth, and people get hung up on that point a lot about how to instruct youth about what to do during a crisis if a friend tells them. So there is spotty, if not core, implementation of suicide intervention skills training for youth in Lane County. But I would also say that that's a, a very unfortunate common trend as well. There is one program, though, that does touch on this, though, called Sources of Strength, that has been implemented widely in our county. COVID really disrupted its implementation. But that does prepare, it does, it does address suicide risk among youth. But what it also does is takes a much more holistic health promotion approach to encourage youth to identify the strengths within themselves that prevent suicide. So, but, but you are, but you're totally accurate. There is not, there is not robust crisis intervention training for youth, and the data would tell us that it is quite necessary.
Thank you, and one other comment, Chair, and that is that the gravity of this issue, and I think every commissioner that has children knows it to their gut in ways that you fundamentally cannot, other than intellectually, if you don't have them, is that, on the one hand, we need to do that. We shouldn't wait for evidence to tell us this, or we, you know, this is a crisis. And I, I just give you my position, not that we as a county have the resources, we need to intervene. And number two, all of the interventions you mentioned are clinical interventions, which are absolutely critical, but they beg, right, the larger problem, which is how is society organized, including social media and its impact on young people? How is society organized that is generating such such a wave of hopelessness and despair and uselessness and meaninglessness, et cetera, in our young people? That is just, it's so concerning. I know I've taken more than my share. Forgive me, this is a topic very close to my personal experience in my heart.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll just comment briefly on that last point is that this is where it's also very important and something that we don't do nearly enough in my field to look at global suicide trends. When we compare the United States to other, to other comparable countries, that's a very difficult thing to do. But when we do that comparison, the United States has one of the highest suicide rates of all, of many other comparable countries. And it is absolutely about the way that we organize our political systems, our economic systems, and how they influence health. That's hard to see on a, like, on a local level and when we just only look within the United States. But those global suicide trends demonstrate that you are able to have democratic societies, ones with relatively similar economic structures, but a very different set of values included in that, in those structures that influence suicide rates.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see Eve Gray has her hand up.
Thank you. I just, a couple of things to add quickly. One is that this, this increase in suicide that we're seeing among our youth may be, as Mr. Brubaker said, though not, not guaranteed to be, partially associated with the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. So one of the things that we have talked about is, would it be worthwhile to look at some portion of our ARPA funds to assist with this issue? So if that is something that you all are interested in, as commissioners, we would be happy to put together a proposal to bring back to the group. Okay, and then the other piece is that I think it's a really important time to highlight also the behavioral health workforce crisis that we are experiencing in Lane County as well as the state of Oregon and nationwide. Though the state of Oregon has higher rates of, of behavioral health disorders, including mental health diagnoses, substance abuse disorders compared to most other places in the nation. And our behavioral health infrastructure is really, really challenged right now. So we are trying very hard to recruit providers into the community at all levels, knowing that, that that is extraordinarily difficult and that the demand far exceeds the capacity. So as, as we are looking at building a workforce for the future, I think that we have to implement current strategies as well as strategies just to talk to youth about getting into this field and, and what that means in order to build our capacity. Because today, even though Mr. Brubaker pointed out that only 50% of those who die by suicide have a behavioral health diagnosis, 50% do. And some, a portion of that other 50% may have reached out for help and not been able to access that. So we don't have immediate answers or solutions to that problem, but I do think it is important to point out in this forum how much of a crisis that is becoming.
Thank you for that. I, I have a specific follow-on to that, which is, is there any model for opportunity for this medical reserve corps in public health to include mental health services when we flag something as being at a crisis proportion like this?
Vice Chair Triger, I'm happy to respond to that. We do have the capacity to include that. I don't, do not believe that has been part of the initial planning, but I do absolutely agree that there's a lot of value to considering mental health response. We certainly did that in the initial response for the pandemic. We did have, we did collaborate very closely with our behavioral health colleagues to provide, to provide support, not only to, to some of the places where we were most invested, such as our shelters, but also to the staff who were serving in those capacities. So thank you for that suggestion. I think that's worth exploring.
Thank you. I know we're, I'm mindful of the time, but this is also a really important topic, and I have a couple of other brief comments or questions. But Commissioner Bozovic, did you want to hop in the queue here or are you satisfied to just listen on this item?
Yeah, it's an important topic. I lost a close friend to suicide. Where he set it up to where I discovered he was gone and made sure his dog was taken care of. In hindsight, I, you know, could see all the calculations and the pre-calculations he did to make, to assure that. You know, it's an important topic, and I believe, you know, the postvention work we're doing and work is important and being done well. You know, I don't have a whole lot to add, other than my support for the work that Roger's doing. You know, I come to some different conclusions as to why we have a higher suicide rate in U.S. And, you know, some of those, you know, are pretty radical ideas about the fact that we've decided to divide our youth up into age cohorts and keep them in that age cohort entirely through our education system and the peer pressure and other things that happen by doing that rather than the traditional, you know, as you think about humanity, we never divided youth by age cohort as strictly as we do now. And that's not a natural mental aspect for humanity. And, and how we resolve that and, and get back to maybe the one-room schoolhouse sort of situation where you have to interact with all age groups, including adults, and, and learn to be that way. That's, that's a huge, long-term, big lift that we'd have to think about to change well beyond our county's capacity. So just trying to bring the, the, the education around this, teaching people to ask about it, you know, talking to people, making them aware, everything we're doing there, I, I support. So I really haven't had a whole lot to add besides that, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think, you know, statistics would show, right? Here's a room full of, of adults. We've all had our lives touched either more or less directly by suicide. It's just, it's just the statistical reality. And I think we're paying special attention to this because we're hearing about our unusually high rates, in particular of youth suicide. But I think we'd all agree that there is no such thing as any rate of acceptable suicide, let alone youth suicide. I will put in another plug for Why We Build. It took me a while to finally get around to get through all the videos, but I was surprised at how many people I recognized and know personally and professionally and really want to appreciate them for putting themselves out. Or the reason that's a courageous thing to do is because of the stigma in the community, not because of something unique about those folks and their, their experience. They represent dozens and dozens of others in our community and their, their experience. I really want to elevate Commissioner Bernie's comments, but more specifically around that overdose intention determination methodology that you mentioned. There are other communities doing that. Do you need, I, I thought it sounded almost like you were suggesting you need Board of Health Direction to further explore how we could employ some of the methods that other counties are doing around determination of, of intention around overdose deaths. Is that so? And if so, I would be happy to kick us off in providing that direction.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be a good conversation for our county to have about how we could adopt policies that would allow us to receive more rapid information. Yeah, so I would be, I would be, I would certainly entertain that, and I know that a number of other folks in public health see the value as well.
And is that, I mean, everything at some point is a resource need, but to what extent on the, on the spectrum of the pieces that are missing right now for us to put that in place is a, is a financial resource issue versus just a, a direction? Or what, what, what do you need from us to, to take the next step to get further into that methodology around overdose intention determination?
Yeah, I, I, I think that we would need direction for multiple different county stakeholders to be, to be involved and collaborate on that. It would be more than just public health. And there would be, there would certainly be some, there would likely be some funding questions, but not, not great from our understanding so far from some of our preliminary research. But I kind of feel I should withhold comment before getting too deep into those weeds.
Well, then, perhaps what, what I would suggest to wrap this item up is, you know, in, this is not an action item for us today, but there is a recommendation that we get future reports and give input on suicide prevention efforts, which this, this particular thing is, is one example of. So, you know, perhaps just at the agenda team, we could have a conversation about, you know, when the right next time is to bring back some more information or request for some direction or support to enhance the, the already stellar services that we're providing the community on this topic. And then the last thing I'll say is, I really appreciate the conversation about, then, you know, obviously, schools is a place where youth are, but the conversation about at home and parents having conversations and Commissioner Buck bringing up a need for more resources for parents to have those conversations. But we all have young people in our lives, whether we're parents or grandparents or aunties or uncles or trusted family friends. So I, I just want to be sure we don't limit the conversation to providing resources to either education professionals or parents specifically. I think as adults, as a community, as a village, we have a responsibility to help raise our, our kids and support them. So thank you for the presentation. I see Commissioner Bernie has a hand up for one, one last comment before we move on.
Yeah, all that's good, agree with it. But Ms. Gray, I don't know if you got enough hands up, but I absolutely support. If you have and can embrace a response that would be more impactful in a proposal to this board and can identify the funding for it, Godspeed.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. With that, I will adjourn our Board of Health meeting and leave it to Chair Farr to reconvene us as the Board of County Commissioners. You're muted, sir.
Oh, I was singing too. You missed my song. We are, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. We are reconvened as the Board of County Commissioners, moving along with the agenda. What a wonderful discussion that was, and thank you for, for presiding over that, Vice Chair Triger. Wonderful is not the right word. What a stimulating and, and thought-inspiring conversation. I will move along with our consent calendar. Item five on our agenda is the consent calendar. I'm going to ask for the motion, and after the motion is made with a second, I will ask for comments on the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Triger, seconded by Commissioner Bernie. Discussion to the motion. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Chair. Excuse me. I just want to, out of an abundance of caution and transparency, provide a disclaimer that Brian Obi of the Obi Construction on item 5A2 has contributed to my campaign. I do not think that this is a actual conflict of interest. I just want to make sure that it is fully transparent.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck, and based upon that statement, I will state that Mr. Obi, former Mayor Obi, has also contributed to my campaign. Then we'll move along, and for the discussion to the motion. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Passes unanimously, five to zero. Moving along with County Council, Mr. Dingle, do you have any announcements today?
Chair Farr, I do just want to brief when I mentioned this briefly this morning during Agenda Team. It is time for the board to appoint the Charter Review Committee. So it's actually selected by the board as a whole. I think it would be a good idea. I'd recommend that you, that, or at least an announcement and applications go out, so we start that process. I'm checking with Ms. Jones. I was not here when that process was done last time, so I'm trying to run down if there is, what process was used last time, just so that we can not reinvent the wheel. But I think it'd be, there's certainly But I think it'd be, there certainly would be no harm in, uh, posting the announcement that the Board will be, uh, accepting applications for, uh, that. And for those of you who don't know, this is a committee that was created by ordinance. So every ten years, a citizens group reviews the charter and then makes recommendations to the Board about changes that they think need to be made. It's important to remember that none of those changes can happen until they're voted by the voters. The Board does not have the authority to amend the charter itself. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dingle, and, uh, we will take that under advice and, uh, then move forward as appropriate. Um, response or, uh, to the announcement, I see none. We'll move along to item seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bernie has his hand up.
I am so sorry. I'm just rushing that, aren't I?
Um, Mr. Dingle, uh, is there any, a couple of things, is there any update to the opioid settlement? Uh, its status and what we can expect in Lane County?
Uh, yes, I plan on addressing that during the, uh, executive session.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I, I think anything else I would ask would be addressed in the executive session. Thank you.
We have a lit, yeah, there's a litigation, uh, update that I think is actually going to be the next item after, uh, County Administrator announcements.
Thank you. We'll be, uh, moving into executive session at that point in time. Then we'll move along. I see, I'm carefully looking to make sure there are no hands raised and there aren't. So, uh, move along to site, item seven A, which is, uh, County Administration. Mr. Mokrhyuski, any announcements?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a couple of quick things, of course, um, as the Board knows, and we'll just remind folks, we kick off our budget process this evening at five thirty. Uh, there'll be a virtual meeting at five thirty for a budget presentation, uh, and first meeting of the Budget Committee. Uh, and then we will be, uh, in person for the rest of our committee meetings, uh, this week, next week and the following week. So looking forward to that process. I also wanted to share with you, um, a brief update on the elec, the primary election uh, that is May seventeenth. And so, um, our county clerk, Cheryl Betchart, um, uh, shares with me, um, updates, and I like to share them, uh, with the Board. And so I will do that, uh, this week and next week. Uh, we're down in, in two weeks, but, uh, today and next week I'll share these updates. So local ballots, uh, were delivered to the post office for mailing on Thursday, April twenty-eighth. The majority of voters should have received their ballot, uh, by, uh, by Wednesday's mail. Um, voters can go to oregonvotes.gov to check the status of their registration or ballot. If you're a registered voter and have now moved, you can update and still receive, uh, a ballot. All twenty-one drop site locations are open and ready to receive ballots. And also a reminder that no stamps are required for returning ballots by mail as all return envelopes are postage paid by the state. So there is, uh, no, no direct cost. Certainly the, uh, folks can return them again to one of twenty-one drop site locations or put them, uh, in the mail, uh, directly. All ballot processes include a minimum of two people with different political party affiliations to ensure the integrity of the process. And then a few important reminders that we want to share with voters. Voters need to remember to sign the outside of their ballot return identification envelope. Uh, signature is required to process your ballot. Um, so make sure to, to sign, that's always the big arrow on the outside of your ballot with the line, so sign here, make sure you sign your ballot. If a voter makes a mistake when marking their ballot, the voter can correct the mistake themselves or they can request a replacement ballot. It's up to the voter on how to handle that. Uh, when this occurs, when there is a, 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 a mistake made and a correction made by the voter, um, it creates an overvote, what's called an overvote, and all overvotes are then reviewed by a team of two people from different political parties. Um, this is to ensure, um, objectivity, uh, and, um, and a clear understanding of what is determined to be the intent of, of that voter. Um, the important deadlines and election information can be found at lanecounty.org/elections, uh, including a virtual I Voted sticker, if you'd like to do that. And then I want to share with the Board, I think as you are aware, our county clerk, Cheryl Betchart, has been with us since February of two thousand and eleven, no, February of two thousand and ten. Um, so she has been here just over twelve years as our county clerk, and she will be retiring at the end of July. Um, so we, uh, she thankfully will be with us through this primary election, and we are in the process of recruiting for a new county clerk. We are thankful to Ms. Betchart for her in, incredible professionalism and diligent work and leadership of our clerk's office and our elections process, uh, for the, over the past decade. And, um, we thank her for her service and wish her all the best in retirement. Uh, but first, we're going to get through this primary election. So that's the update today, and I'll have another update for you next week. Thank you, Chair.
Bravo. Thank you, Mr. Mokrhyuski. And I'll mention one thing that I heard this morning is that there is no longer a secrecy envelope inside of your ballot for return. I believe that was a decision made by the Secretary of State in order to, I think it was a quote, to save trees, so.
Well, yes, Chair, and I, just briefly, I can say that I, it was determined through a lot of analysis that there was not an actual benefit to those secrecy envelopes that, um, that they didn't provide an additional, uh, benefit in terms of, uh, securing, uh, the information in the ballots, that the, that the envelope, the primary envelope that's provided, provides that. And there is, of course, an additional cost, so the Secretary of State's office made that determination. So you will notice that, uh, we don't have those secrecy ballots and, and that is why. So thanks for making that, uh, that mention.
Thank you. And I note that it is a statewide decision, not a Lane County decision that brought that about. And you covered, Mr. Mokrhyuski, a topic that somebody asked in an email. I think we all received the email. How do I know that my self-corrected envelope isn't being, um, re-corrected by somebody at the elections? Uh, you provide the information regarding, uh, uh, at least two sets of eyes will be, that will be, uh, uh, take, pay attention to the, what's called an overvote based on that. And you mentioned from two different political parties, and I wonder if any of those political parties include mine, which is no party. So, uh, that's a rhetorical question. We will move along then, Mr. Mokrhyuski, um, toward our executive session. Now, unless we come out in, uh, in other business after the executive session, following my gavel, we will, uh, we will move into executive session. And we will reconvene at one thirty with a time certain in our regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. So at this point, I'm going to read us into executive session. Um, the Board of County Commissioners will meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations and to consult with council regarding the rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation. This executive session is held pursuant to O R S one ninety-two point six six zero two H, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be, no decision may be made in executive session, and we reserve the right to come back out into public session should the need arise. Now, at the sound of my gavel, we'll, uh, adjourn the regular session of the Board of County Commissioners, move into executive session. And it is now ten thirty-eight. Let us, uh, return, um, let's give seven minutes and return at ten forty-five in executive session.